Now. You're in the with the federal reasons. You do that, you know. I'm trying to leave you this is a lot of. We choose the power for the understanding. I want to. In the business. It should be now. It says the regular board Columbia Board of Select on regular meeting Tuesday, May seventh. Year point point four, okay. Uh, I move to approve the agenda as presented, any discussion there? Although the favor. Thank you. Google, I move to approve the board selection regular meeting minutes for April sixteen point point four. Any discussion? Nothing, although the favor. Oh, thank you. Okay, four point two. Yeah, based on the respect that we have, I move to approve the public hearing meeting minutes for April sixteen point point four and regarding. Regarding a proposal vision, Lake Orleans is article two, three, and four. Mr. Congressman. Although the favor. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Chen. Good job doing this, it's been a lot of this and waiting all the time for this and meetings.
But I'm gonna try the AI version on Zoom so I can see.
That was on the town administration. I would say I actually too, uh, since you brought it up, the meeting for the budget two weeks ago. Uh, I was very happy to see that the notes were pretty explicit, I dove into there the next day. Take a look at some of the things that were said, so I appreciate it also for the event.
Thank you.
Uh, oh, audience of citizens, can we ask that right?
Yeah.
Audience of citizens, so is somebody still on there?
Yes, I think might be.
So is there Nick Ferris, Nick Ferris come off of mute and can you introduce yourself? If he invited.
Um, you might have to click. Yes, unmuted.
If you want to, Nick, are you doing a school function?
Yes, it's not there.
Okay, well, thanks for joining us. Uh, business for school, I hope you get A plus, so. Um, old business. So the tax exemption for business incentive programs is in here. The, I know that, uh. The Economic Development Commission met and kind of reviewed it. Bill, you were there, correct?
Yes.
Uh, you wanna go over this a little bit with us, what your thoughts were and.
I think we we wanted to just make it more equitable and that's pretty much what we came up with, what you see. Okay.
I also, um. Worked with the town attorney and we had to make sure that the qualifying businesses met the ordinance which you. Left it tonight, I'll have it actually put together officially as an ordinance and then we at the next course, let me take a final look at it in this set of town meeting, but one. These allow businesses, I'll stamp out the last page, highlighting yellow, section twelve dash sixty five B. And. The one which is. Uh, residential, what that's really talking about is. Permanent residential connection with residential properties of four or more dwelling units. Um, really meaning apartments. Cause I don't think this was designed to give a tax incentive to. Regular housing, it's more, it's an economic rather than. So they're just, that is spelled out. More on that. Great, and then those are the. Percentages that came back from the U C. And, um. The pathway would need that economic development would work on notifying the business of the opportunity for an incentive. Uh, tax incentive, and then it would go towards the board selectmen and fight back in town meeting. And if you hit all the must do, it becomes an incentive, it could start within six months of approval and end within a year and a half.
Okay. Uh, other thoughts?
Is there a sunset provision in this or is this remade perpetuity unless there's a change?
Unless you bring it back up and fuck them up.
So I'm just thinking hypothetically, you know, seventy nine years, well, things change, you know, tax situation change, it gives other opportunity of review or whatever, it's something to give a view.
And part of it is, it's referencing twelve dash six by B, which is a new enabling legislation that could vary as well. It would affect us. Do you think?
I think it's a great idea.
Trying to get this.
What is?
That's it.
Um. You know, I have heard from people who, I mean, a lot of, not a lot of people are gonna spend twenty five thousand dollars, that's a small business and everything, and they probably, that twenty five thousand dollars is more. Difficult to raise for some of those people started there, the citizens, half a million, three million dollars. So I I heard comments of why didn't we, you know, kind of just run the gamut from three million all the way down for everybody? Uh. When a lot of people struggle to raise a hundred thousand dollars to start a business, so. Did you did any of that thought come across with the E D C film? No, no. There's obviously twenty five thousand, twenty five thousand, if we if we went all the way down with that fifty percent, forty percent, whatever. For that, that's not a lot of money that the town is truly going to lose, and if it helps those people stay in business and thrive, I I I mean, I I understand. Why that's there and with five up to five hundred thousand, is that twenty five, from twenty five thousand up to four hundred ninety nine 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 nine?
No, less than twenty five thousand, I mean, right up to four hundred ninety nine, is the.
Okay, may I ask why this, I mean, I do, I just have a question is why you would stop? On the on the lesser amounts instead of just do one and off very good.
I think that was the guidance that we saw when this first came to us from the state. Or state guidelines, but we relent all we can do whatever we want, but originally states set it.
And it was set like this?
It was set, um, without the sixty and fifty on the middle. The middle was eighty seven the only. And we added two more years to the middle of five.
I don't know, it just seems, it's it's fair and it's right, goes to everybody, that's just my own question.
I think it was to encourage the larger investments in the community or businesses rather than the smaller ones. I think we're totally ignoring the smaller ones, but.
Yeah, I I I understand that statement, but if they're. If they're spending three million dollars or more, I'm not sure they're concerned about the taxes that people that are spending hundred thousand dollars or that.
We can send it back.
Because what did the business people say? But I mean, the points, but.
For the business people thing, I I do believe that they would like. Any kind of rebate that we can give them.
Right.
Cause most businesses, I, many years ago, I get it, most businesses failed in three years.
Mm hmm, yeah.
And.
Most business owners had two failed business businesses before licensing.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we can help them again survive and 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 thrive, then. Uh, why don't we table this for now then we'll revisit, yeah, okay, and I'll raise your concerns with the C D C, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Municipal Advisory Services. Mark and Deb brought in two municipal advisory services, interviewed them and, um. Both of them said they they felt just a little bit more comfortable with munstat and then okay with that, so, uh. I moved to authorize Mark Walt at town administrator enter into a contract and new stat services, Inc., the municipal advisory services. You know, and we are handing out.
It's just a monthly newsletter, monthly newsletter, okay.
Um, you're discussing, you're both very good.
Munstat was oriented a little more towards all small towns and East Coast and Phoenix is more all big.
I think it's quite a few works, I mean, I know it's been a process, maybe you get going with it, but in the process, but how does it, how does it work?
So they they advise us as we're getting ready, they have set fees. Um. Very similar. Each one of them set fees, but what they do is they interview us, they package up all our finances, and then they. Advise us on how to do short term funding, do we actually bond, they they become our consultants in a bond issue, and then they have to get us rated. Um, both firms recommended instead of movies, which we had last time when you scanned in fours, which is more favorable towards small towns like us. Um, and then they have us pitch our town and our offering to scanners and boards to get ready. They look at our finances and they made some. Advice already, the one thing we're missing in the rating category, besides the fact that we have no debt and we got good. Um, history, history of funds and paying where our general fund has gone, but they said the one thing we're missing is we need. Uh, financial policies, like the policy of. How do we use general fund and they gave a whole list of things we need, and that'll score quite a bit of points towards our rate. Uh, so what we're going to do, I've already downloaded, I can answer how we need a general fund. Well, what they like is they.
We can get this and. I think back, we're gonna have to bond this first of all, but I know we don't have an extra, you know, three point five million dollars sitting in anyway, certainly not, but. How much are we gonna end up paying them? What do you think?
It's probably they have a set fee, they said it was a lot of money, I don't know. It's the other fees going up to the stomach of the bottom and all the cost. You know, so they said the most is seventy five thousand dollars just to go out the bar.
And that doesn't matter how much we bought, or does it?
No, that's correct. Where do we stand as far as the grant agreement? We've we've received it.
It's all good.
Well, well, we haven't gotten, we've received verbally that we got.
Okay, so we know simplest.
Friday.
Okay.
Thursday, Friday.
Thank you.
But we're waiting to get the actual paper, it's like, hey, you graduated, you know, type of thing, you need a diploma, but we're waiting to get the actual paper, but we were notified.
Yeah. So how long does it take to get, I'm just trying to understand this, how long does it take to get the, um, the bond?
Would be. Probably six months.
Six months, and do we have to start?
Wait here, depending on how fast we move on all this, um, I do believe part of the process, we'll have downtown meetings and approvals and all that kind of stuff going through the thing, but the town needs to be aware of what's going on, if that's part of it, we do have to add on.
So do we need more, now can we start, we may want to start the process of this HVAC system before we get the money.
We have to wait to get the award letter, right, it should be in a couple of weeks, that'll tell us how. When, when's the end of the period when everything obligated and how long we have to do that. So then the next step is to figure out whether we have to get some short term financing and to start the project, if they're going on, and we have to go out to bid. Um, I think the HVAC committee is supposed to get possibly the electrical. Get that going, or you won't know until Monday. Yeah, so get to anything until we know about the electrical upgrade too, so. More likely, we'll probably end up doing for financing, can we get the bonding all in place? But in order to get the bond around here, watch the project, we're gonna have to go out to the, um, wholesale, fast enough.
Can we do the project while kids are in school or does it have to be during the vacation?
So, what's the story? So, the projection right now is we wouldn't be in a position at the early or anything to raise something to fall, right, so. One thought is there could be some work done in the evenings after hours, like the ceiling and kind of programming.
Yeah.
The duck, but the majority of the construction right now looks like it wouldn't happen until summer.
Next summer.
All between availability, the 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 timing of the electrical switch here, like.
And getting.
That's what I thought once. Right, right, the electricals that need a long hold on the ten. But, there's.
Something that is.
Minimum. Again, with the fact factors available, the equipment is available, all the timelines, some of the work will be done, like I said before, it's have, you know, after school, maybe weekends, um.
It seems, it just, it just seems like to me that it should be the town, committee from the town. Finance and select somebody from the board or something like that, goes to the financial and says, here's what we want to borrow money, I know this is, it's way too simple to really make it realistic, but we want to borrow money. This is our, this is our rating because we have no debt, we pay our bills, we have a good general fund and and, you know, we can. We low on taxes, so if we had to, we could tax people more, and the bottom line is, I don't want to have to pay X amount for the bond and X amount for, you know, the services and, which is basically another. One year bond payment of, it would be three hundred thousand dollars, it just, it will seem like a lot, is this where you standard?
Uh, so I didn't, wasn't around with the first bond, I'd say, but I think it is kind of standard, just from listening to what's going on, I mean, this is.
Same policy I follow in the state. It's just typical, this kind of costs for this.
Seems like.
Aren't, aren't we looking to couple and do like, right, so I mean, so we could gain economies by bonding a larger amount of. The road projects, not just the HVAC, right, and a portion of that's a fixed cost.
Well, that is that in order to fund, we have to have the specific back of what we want to borrow, so if the. Costs aren't set on what we want to do for the roads and coves yet, but the HVAC is ready to go, then we'll have to do a second bond.
Well, HVAC is not ready to go, and I think by the time we're ready, we really know what we're gonna spend on HVAC, I think we might know.
At least you call. We could find you enough, right? But also, my question is, are they gonna allow us to do a larger bond to cover other things because they're going to, you gotta, okay, because they're gonna cover X amount percentage of the job? Even though we bond for X amount of dollars, they're gonna pay hopefully fifty two percent of that, they don't mind us tagging on things, even even if. If it is, uh, specifically disciplined for roads and coves, we say that in the bond, you don't have any problem with that?
So I think what's gonna come down to is in order to get the money from the state. I'm gonna have to submit reports to what's been spent on that specific project, I don't think they care how it's being paid for. But we have to give them like receipts and all kinds of stuff and then that will reimburse based on what they submit. You know, whether we put it in the bond or not in the bond or whatever, that's what we have.
So we have to pay the money before we get the money from the state, before we have three months. Yeah, so we have to borrow and we have to borrow the whole amount?
She's the last part, she should be the form.
But. You know, um, I don't think we have to bond a whole amount, so if we have a way we can fund it to get us going and then see reimbursement, but again, I don't know what the reimbursement. Rate is, whether it's every six months, every month, you can submit something, you know, it's all up to the AR, so.
So we really won't know anything until you get the final paper or the letter, the information, how it's done, and how it's funded.
It could be a quarter, yeah, so it all depends, you know, but I know we have to get the work. Certain part of work completed in order to pay for it before we get them. We're not just gonna give.
So that's pretty typical for grants.
It's like the secret, you can, they give it upfront, otherwise you have to submit for labor, all changes.
And what's, well, the interest rates gonna vary depending on what's going on.
Bonding is higher.
Yeah, could be.
Well, it's an election year. Yeah, probably, yeah.
But that's.
So we we sign, enter into a contract with them, we're locked into them to do these services, correct? Cause they're gonna do all the services and they won't pay until we issue the bond. And they have fixed fees.
It's twenty, what's?
When the bond is issued.
And so their job is to find the best bank to be able to issue the bonds. I'm just wondering why we hire somebody, like we can't do it, but I guess it's just more complicated than, well, I don't think it's a thing, but it's.
Very complicated. They have to get us rated and try to make us have the highest rating possible, say if there's money wrong, okay, and then they have to actually sell a bond and they have to run that sale. And you literally watch all the bids come in and take a little bit.
So where, where, it's not a bank, where's?
Who do I, whoever wants to buy a municipal, it's a market, it's a market, we're buying municipal. And these guys, that's all they do is they issue municipal. For towns all over the state that they're having to do, and they basically run two plans.
So we have one more question for me, so we have to bond for six million whatever dollars?
No, we bond for what we all.
That's what you were saying, we have to bond for the whole, we have to talk to the advisor about that because, you know, if we're getting say fifty two percent reimbursement. We have fun three million dollars or, you know, if it's roughly half of this project, and we have to figure out how we're gonna pay for it.
Right.
So, you know, we can't, we can't rely on the money coming in to reimburse us to pay our costs and pay our costs, you know?
So we have to do short term notes until we actually.
Or.
Issue the bond.
We can. Six thousand dollars. Pay six hundred and sixty nine dollars.
Six thousand would be easy.
I can, I can bond, well, come on, you can bond that. You get reimbursed and then use the money for the front of reimbursement for the roads.
Yeah, the other thing you're hiring in stores, you have to watch Albert Goddard, which is. Bonding too much, more than the project, now you've made interest on. Buying money, which is illegal, so it's a big deal that they assault with us, bond the exact amount we're gonna need.
So if you're not willing to get money from it.
You can't do. And sometimes these, it take years and it's, you know, you're moving money around, financing it yourself until you buy the bond. Cause you you set the actual about when you buy.
Can, can you break up the bonds into chunks that are kind of phased through time based upon when you think you're gonna leave it?
Those would be the short term notes, those would be the chunks. And you, you guys are willing to sit down and answer all these questions.
About page you know, I'm sure every town that borrows, this is what happens, and they must.
Deb and I walked through all these scenarios with that.
It's just unusual. We're not the only ones.
We wanted to have a comment, yeah.
I'd like to talk to them, cause I I. You know, they're.
I think you have to do our due diligence.
I think absolutely, this this short term lending. You know, it's not somebody on, you know, you know, we're gonna use to pay more, we pay more higher interest on a short term note and that, I mean. Uh, one of the thing that comes into play here is, I know that Deb, I heard last night at another meeting. The general fund may be better than we anticipated two weeks ago, correct? I'm not asking you for specifics, but it could be in the neighborhood of a year or a year and a half of bond payment. Depending on the bond payments, but it's, you know, cause the town has, town and the school is going to give back to the general fund, correct? Okay, so what I I, we need to, we're doing the outside, I should have done that meeting, I don't know, but.
It'd be nice to have them come in to just understand the process and.
So that was certainly what that means that, when this is twenty first, twenty first of May.
No, I mean, um, Nebraska, excuse me, I'm sorry, I shared my calendar, I'm in Nebraska. We're gonna head to the person next morning, twenty third of May, no, twenty first, I should be okay. Okay, everybody else check your calendars, great.
I'll take care of it.
And if, if for any reason, would Zoom be okay, just in case you're the top of the.
I don't have a problem if the owl, if they can hear us, and it's working.
But I'll.
Um.
They're from Connecticut.
Yeah, massive, new business, collide, we're on new business, right, yeah, Columbia Lions Club, Fourth of July parade, fund request. Well. When you want, may have to pay, so I don't, I I. We talked about it, I know we have to advise, not advise, I'm telling my guy what's coming up.
Yeah.
The fifth, there are two hundred fifty years or what, right? It's coming up in two years, I said to the Lions, can we please start planning now, this was four years ago, I said, please start planning now, make sure we have a, a good parade for the birthday of our country, two hundred fiftieth birthday, and they said, yeah, 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 well. Um, and last year I said to them. I like the parade, but we seem to be losing out on some, some bands and stuff that have come before and aren't coming anymore, and they said, or they're sending five people. And they said, you know, it's it's, they're asking more money, it's more for everybody and. And they said, you know, it's it's, they're asking more money, it's more for everybody, and um that's what we're up against. I said, okay, I'm I'm, that's my challenge, it's the one thing we do. For. The the parade.
It's wonderful.
I talked to the governor, he loved our quaint parade, that's what he told me, I wanted bridges, he wanted to talk about the parade. So it's no, and it's good, so uh honestly, they have. They contacted one of the premier. Bands. Okay, and they're coming. They booked them for this upcoming Fourth of July. Because they want to sign into a contract through twenty twenty-six. And the hurricane said, you know, we 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 do, we were doing Massachusetts and Rhode Island, bigger parades. But we're what we wanna stay closer to home, we're in Connecticut. So. We got it for this year. But it's gonna cost us four grand for them, roll down the streets. So um the Lions asked me, can the town? Chip in twenty-five hundred dollars. So on top of what we already. Yeah, Connecticut Hurricanes. Yeah, I know, Tom Egan, he asked me if I can handle this, um I said yes, so.
They're gonna hang around and perform afterwards and to make it rough.
The parade is great, it really is.
It it is great, but. They're from Seymour, Connecticut, uh they're legitimate, big brass band. Long history in Connecticut, but they've been doing multiple parades in Massachusetts and Rhode Island. And uh they wanna stay closer to home, and that's why they're looking, they're willing to do the Columbia Parade. So, um.
Do the route, maybe do songs, that's that's quite the deal. I I I just don't know, I mean, a song break, but would people really appreciate know that that we committed? Multi-year contract, it's been a lot of money for a band that's gonna roll along and play through songs, and no one's gonna hear the whole song.
Yeah, but it's better than Fireworks, which would cost twenty thousand dollars to be over fifteen minutes.
I mean, there's other bands, we both. Parades in Hartford, I don't know, same guys.
They pay big money for those.
Yeah, those are ten grand.
It's just everything's gotten much more expensive than it ever used to be. It seems like a lot of money, but. So and so they they're kind of, they're being recommended as a high-end band, it sounds.
Last year, I don't even think we had a band.
We had five and drunk.
Yeah.
Four guys. Uncle Sam, what do you think? It is a lot of money, I know.
And we gotta support our parade.
So you're kind of leaning out.
Yeah, I I mean, if they stayed, they performed, maybe, you know, for a little while and town people could enjoy it. I'd be glad to spend them, but it's things like a lot, but though it's gonna be on well for five minutes, six minutes, right?
Just. So they're just gonna watch, do their thing and march.
Honestly, yeah, I mean. I'd be in favor of the added twenty-five hundred and not know that it's going towards this bit, so I mean, I mean, I. I support the increase, what they do and probably sponsor it, it's like. I'm just thinking four grand, sounds like a lot. They choose to bring this, their discretion, it just seems like a lot, but. Like you said, we are leading up to the ten hundred and fifty.
Championship title in all age drone forest story and history, really, including three D C A World Championship. So they're they've been around since nineteen thirty.
How many people on the bench does it say?
I I mean, they're a lot of children are promoted.
It's something.
Hope it's a sunny day. Really?
I bet, yeah. I mean, if it's raining, um, you still have to pay him if you booked him, I think that's the way it works is.
If the parade is canceled, I don't think they're.
We don't think we can have that. We used to hear they have to pay some of these people.
I'm gonna make a phone call. Find out.
I think you should accept the Lions' recommendation.
They're they're doing.
I moved to release the funds budgeted for the annual Fourth of July parade to the Columbia Lions Club and to prove in addition twenty-five hundred dollars. As requested by the Columbia Lions Parade Committee. All of, any more discussion?
I do have one question, is it, you know, the theme, I I guess.
It's in the uh, it's in the view. Isn't it?
I don't know, I haven't.
I read the view, it was in there, and. And I said, well. Do we have the views out here? Okay, we better wait for, we wanna get the minutes. Nick, thanks for coming on, no microphone, two eighty-one Route sixty-six, the new resident. Good to see you here. Go to the parade, Nick, it's really.
This year's theme is Dare to Dream.
Dare to dream.
This theme was inspired by the prize-winning artwork of Ethan Roach, who will also be a great.
Good, okay, um next is the request from the town Columbia Garden Unification Club. To change the color of Yeoman's Hall doors. To black, meaning both sides. Why the requests are.
He also wanted to change Morsini School door.
You know, those were like.
And then the chastel wanted gold rust. Gold on the chapel, and the sorceress said, no.
Right.
All will allow is these doors will be black.
Because it's the town, it's up to the town.
The library front is black too. And the library, they want the back door.
It's up to the library.
So. The advantage of black doors, they don't show.
I know, and still the white doors get dirty fast.
So, so the this town historian's okay with that?
Yes, they're they're okay with John, this is okay, this building.
John Hill in here?
Yeah, she doesn't care.
Because we have a town historian, and then John is very knowledgeable and very. Included for spearheading a lot of different things.
Yes, I talked to her a couple times on this.
I'm confused as to what the Yeoman's Hall doors have to do with the garden unification.
It was their idea to. Make our town not just the garden parade through. Our accents of our doors to bring few more beauty to our town. It'll make the colorful flowers pop. So the front door is coming in.
And you can paint over that, I mean.
They're painting, they're painting white.
You could paint it black, it'd be hard to get a white again after black.
Any more discussion, all those in favor? Opposed?
I'm gonna keep them white.
I will, can you share with us your thought on?
Yeah, basically, I wanna keep them white. Maybe it's because of just growing up here in Connecticut, it sounds.
I don't think the.
You're the you're the resident expert.
So so can I reconsider my vote?
Yeah, I'm thinking it too, I mean, I didn't know, I mean, I I didn't like.
The motion to withdraw the vote. All those in favor of removing the. Motion to paint in black. So they've always been white.
Do we have any black doors?
No, we have. Black door, I'm sorry, we have black shutter? Do we have shutters on the building? No.
We don't have black shutters.
All those in favor of leaving the doors white? Authorization to, huh, special white, authorization to purchase mail and map, street map. Okay, before we end, are we gonna mail these maps?
So Hebrew and Columbia both went out of their map, cause the company doesn't do this anymore, these are the free maps. That we have at the front entrance, yeah. So two town clerks, the Hebrew clerk and a law clerk. Have designed a new map without advertising, but with information about our past. On the one side, even on the other. Right, this company doesn't exist anymore.
Picked up the slack some.
Not that our town clerks.
What, when did those come out, the ones you're having here, when did that?
I've been here eight years and.
And you're still not, we still have, for eight years, we still have those members.
No, we're now, we're now, we're not, and Hebrew is out. So. They, the two clerks got together and said.
Yeah, it puts their advertising on.
I have a question for you. If you need to find a map in Hebrew or Columbia.
I'll look on my phone.
Just look on your phone, am I right? The other thing is, we're putting what information on there, since we're no advertising, what information, town information?
Is there a way that this could be included in the page in the Columbia View? And then you have, you have, you have all of that, that's included, that's coming out multiple times a year, people who get their local map and.
Things get used, I mean, we all use like GPSs now, do people use maps?
Probably one day a company went out of business.
It's probably why you're still old, I keep one in my car. The big giant map we use for emergencies, that was maybe.
So do people, would people use it, I guess is my question, if they're gonna use it, we probably shouldn't get it.
Well, I think they put it in the newcomer's welcome basket.
Nick, have you ever received a map?
You'd have to text us and answer.
And did you get a welcome to Columbia packet, do we send those out?
Yes, the town clerks have them.
Yeah, they hand it to you when you say, I'm a new resident.
Nick, they they hand them to you?
We have a whole packet of.
Nick, have you met to the town hall and dealt with the town clerk, and did they give you a new resident?
I have paperbacks.
I think I gave the mask in the back of my car.
Not yet, I'll be visiting. Don't expect to get a map.
Can we just do it in the centerfold in the Columbia Views?
Okay, so here's the thing. Our advertisement in there. Is dangerously close to not paying for reviews anymore. It's dwindling. So. We need more, we need more advertisers.
Abuse isn't good for us.
Well, you've got a really good idea.
We determine if people would use that, and I would say, if people would pick it up and use it, I would say yes, but I just don't know, because people use GPSs now.
They don't know how many we originally have.
Cause I think they've got around for at least, I think, twenty years.
When do you have to know all this, this is ridiculous, we're putting everything down, picking it down.
I mean, who would use it, they're dumb.
I'll take it to them.
We can use them, I use my GPSs, GPS.
Are you a subject round expert on this?
You can't use your cheap gas to just. That's a point. Now you know, for for in the, you could put it on the website.
You got to put it all, hey, get the Columbia map, it's on the website, print it all, you can have it printed, yeah, the app, I love it.
We could make a map suitable for printing, but I don't. I I I, we could do. We can make the map suitable for printing.
Set up the alert when it's right, so everyone knows it's there.
We're happy to make that.
Last, um, Robin has a good reason why we should do that, that's different than what we're talking about.
Better than we ran out?
It's better than we read it out. He wants it for some, yeah, for some reason, anyway, it's.
But it's not on here, but I'm gonna ask anyway, where are we on the um hotels?
May twelve, this is start date, our two of the orders, yeah, okay, good.
Uh, okay, we're not in there, appointments and resignations, retirement of Connie Chistler. Zoning enforcement officer.
I was just down, I had a meeting today with the family manager of East Hampton. They all the need is going to enforce, right, sure. I I he's, I said, how many hours do you need, and he said, one, I said, oh, I need the same, maybe we can go again and. Home person can vote us, so we're brainstorming, because there aren't any.
Do we have to have them?
Yes, and they actually have the certification, it takes like two years to get. Which the state keep, eyeing on all these certifications that these. Agents need to achieve, and it's not easy. You have to actually, to complete your certification, you have to bring up. Haste to court, I think they might have removed that as a requirement. In enforcement.
Now, do we, I know she's part-time, do we need more, does she need more hours to do her job? No, no, I, I know that, but, but somebody new coming up.
We did, we did get warned that, um, nineteen is not enough hours to do that. It's a night, it's enough to do zoning, it's not enough to do enforcement.
So do we need a full-time person?
No. I think they did not, well, I know.
For maybe thirty?
I mean, that outfit that we contact help with the planning and zoning, or being able to, I've already contacted them, they said they could. Cover us until we hire someone, but they don't have the bandwidth to supervise the person.
Right, but they're, they might be able to help identify or. Could maybe.
Or the same thing, what would them do in the job for the law, I think I could get a feel for how many hours you need.
Yeah, I'm just questioning, not the number of hours.
Zoning enforcement is there.
Yeah, I guess you're, wait till we get the phone calls. It's usually a neighbor battling neighbor that wants enforcement. Because they're sick of watching their big giant semi-jerals dark parking in front lawn. Or they've got four junk cars in the back, they don't see. Cause you wanna have one extra car.
Or they're trying to make a lot, where there isn't a lot, or. There's, there's, there's some things out there, some of them.
Their driveways on my property. It, it's endless. Well, that would be the reparent.
And the other thing is, we need to. Look at the job description for the zoning enforcement officer. And then go to, so tell me. It seems to me if the state has so many demands and certifications in this. Basically, wouldn't they set the qualifications of the owner JavaScript? Um, or we're just going to. What they require is the. The zoning enforcement official certification for medical certification of zoning enforcement official. And the ability to retain the certification within two years of being hired. That's what the state want. Okay, so you don't have to have your certification, you have to be able to obtain it within two years of time.
Correct. I would never know if someone would come to me and say, I wanna be a zoning enforcement officer. There's some days that I'd love to. Oh, you'd be good at it.
Oh, he would be great.
What does it say here with the educational background?
I like them. Probably and courage, like that's.
So physical demands, are we talking about the change to make?
Yeah, we mainly just took out some things that weren't really. I mean, did you need to be able to type twenty minutes?
Right, but climbing. You only need to climb stairs, run a ladder, so if I have a zoning issue that's high. I'm not gonna have any force, because they can't, they're not supposed to.
I don't believe climbing, I was ever climbing black.
We don't have a whole lot of hail wells, I mean.
And if someone's climbing a ladder, you don't.
I was trying to make sure I understand it. If you're enforcing something, what you can't. Get access to, cause there's no stairs. Sounds like a technicality where somebody's there, I don't.
There's a lot of people that have been hired and have been there a long time, who may. Have an accident and disabilities occur.
Okay.
That can no longer do something like, uh, law enforcement people or.
That would be an idea, can, someone's retired longer.
The truth of it is, who's used to.
Some confrontation.
It's waiting people with.
That's a nice way to put it.
We gotta be the black.
Right, without the.
I, 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 I've looked at these. What they're taking out, except for prepared reports and memorandums for the town administrator. Why is that taken out? Shouldn't you know what's going on? Reports?
Well, she actually prepares it for the planning zone mission.
But as a town administrator, should you not know what is going on, because I should know what's going on.
But then it's taken out. Like zoning and zoning board of appeals and other town, you took out all that.
But she, there's also above that maintains laws on complaints and reports status, town administration, and so. It's just the law as opposed to the report.
Right, but. There are times when people in positions that should know. Are not informed and. It gets lost in the shuffle. Um. She should be able to, or they should be able to keep reports to inform you.
Okay.
I, the board. Of what is happening now.
Do you want to just put that back in?
Yeah.
I would second.
Maintains records and permits, I, I, I would want.
Cause I mean, would the reports become part of records, if there's any kind of case, cases in court?
What I do is I sit down, I keep. All the records are in the land use file of the complaint. Of all, all her memo tree types, all her violation she submits, they're all in the file.
So it's just not a report that's aggregated all the information?
Right, I don't get a separate report documenting. She does do a report with my zone to tell a list of violations that she worked on. But there's, there isn't an in-depth. Report of each violation.
But she should have maintained records and permits.
So is the concern that. You're gonna reduce the pool of those that would be willing and able to do the job, because. And you're trying to watch the number of hours, is it really you're trying to limit amount of hours you need this person by eliminating the need to. An aggregate report?
Well, I don't require an aggregate report, so.
Correct.
She was not giving, I, I rely on every two weeks, every week or two weeks, depending on how much activity I have. I have a land use meeting with all my employees down there, and then we go over the full permit file. One by one, and make sure all the permits are moved into the system, and we address. What enforcement are you doing, we have any problems, so we, we do it within person meeting. That's how I've been doing it.
But then there's no record. It's not a certain minutes.
No, but there's, I keep a whole folder revolving, we have our. Permit link, which is our online software system, the documents, a big permit, and all the notes are in permit link. And all the notes are in the file.
But if you want anything, you should get a report. Updated whenever you have your, your meeting. As well as down in the office down there that says, okay, this is what we're working on, uh. Land, you know, boundary dispute, this, 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 just so you know, uh.
So that's, that's unfortunate, so I can, I could require, right now, permit link does print, which is. And everything. That's just stats.
Yeah, that's just numbers, I would think more for me.
Something similar.
It is similar, but I will tell you. You're only gonna have, there's not some, there's a board down there with, uh, eight active permits. You'd be surprised, just, there's a place on there that House has been on there for three years. And they haven't finished their permit, haven't cleared the permit. You have to ask. Two thousand twenty-one, why is it still?
Actually, that one house, we're actually gonna send, we just sent them a letter that approved, that we need to know what you're. You're doing, and you need to clear a path for a fire engine, cause you've allowed the driveway to grow, we, if your house picks on fire, we cannot get to it. So right now, that's from, I don't know, but the bottom line is.
Unless, unless he gets a report. And, or walks through there and looks up at that board, like I did.
And zone, planning zoning wants a report of all violations he's working on, so she does do an Excel report on that. And permit link is a new report of every permit following that.
Yeah, and zoning can, you know, planning and zoning can look at that and go, yeah, 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 what, what's this one here? They can ask for.
So why would you put that back in? There, it's there. As a, as a requirement.
Well, okay. I don't know if she maintains the records of permits and correspondence, but. Correspondence, yes, if she has to make some correspondence, the permits are down in the land use department, right? Sorry, just put it back in there.
Okay.
Assistant updated town webpage, out. Twenty words per minute, out, okay? Crawling, ladders, just get the job done. Anybody else? Okay, move to approve the proposed changes made to the job description for the zoning enforcement officer. As verbally amended. You have those two? All those in favor? I wanna be a vice principal in the school. Absolutely. Okay, appointments of marine patrol officers, uh, we welcome back Brian Hall, Ronald Smith. Jody Gross and Tom Griffin. If. You tell me we can do that, so I move to approve the appointments of Brian Hall, Ronald Smith, Jody Gross and Tom Griffin, who's marine patrol officer. Any discussion? All those in favor? I will say sometime this summer. Do, do a fam ride. Familiarization ride with them. See what they're.
Yeah, I'll do it again.
It came out. A couple of weeks ago, when we were over in the other room over there, we were talking about these, uh, the, the new ordinances and stuff, like the new rules and stuff. A couple of people said, I've heard. The marine patrol people getting berated out there, I've heard, and they shouldn't have to put up with that. So, good, take a ride. Sorry, say, you all right?
No, I just said, people should, so they're trying to make the legs sing, making the rest.
You're up. Um, Memorial Day is Monday, May twenty-seventh. And Tim Ackert has been the R D speaker. Talked to Tim today. And just one other thing I talked to Tim today about is, um, Senate Bill three two eight. C T M sent out an emergency request, then we contacted our local legislators, so I talked to Tim about it, sent him everything. This was the last day in second. For, um, our legislators, midnight tonight. And, um, the problem is, is S B three twenty-eight. Actually would enable an individual to reflect full workers' compensation benefits and full pension benefits. Allowing the employee to earn more outward work than they regularly make in the salary. It totally eliminates the incentive to go out for. And the towns and villages values are flipping out. Cause this is a big deal. And the unions want, they wanna get it in, and they'll probably get it. We've had this every year. So they're injured on the job, and they're making more money staying out injured than the regular salary.
Instead of the regular salary.
Right, it's, it's just wrong. But I'll send it off. But.
Yeah, but it's not gonna matter.
It won't matter. Culver Road, September, maybe we had our first meeting. Um. It, it was a good meeting. And there was a. Um. Group that's willing to go out and, and I'm going to dig them a list of roads and specific issues we're, we're looking at, and they wanna do a road trip. And go around and look at everything, and that'll be scheduled for sometime in the next couple of weeks. So, good start.
There's more answers out there than just throw a half a million to three million dollars at something. I met, uh, I had breakfast yesterday with another town administrator. Large town, and he showed me something that they did in their town. And I brought it to my attention, we'll bring it to the committee. It's where it's been approved, and that's a long time, and it's a lot. Cheaper than replar, repairing the whole culvert, and, uh, so there are answers out there if we dig for them. And that's why this committee, we want. Give us out of the box, and Mike. Parents says to me, Stephen, uh. How out of the box do you want? I go, Mike, I don't care what you got, it doesn't mean we're gonna do it, but, you know, it's. If it can work, and it's safe, and it sounds, and it's out of the box. I don't care, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll look at it and it's good. Get blessed by the engineer. Or. You know, state and find out if we can do it, so if, if some answers out there, it's not all, throw millions of dollars at it. But on that note, the culverts and everything, if you haven't been on Hunt Road.
Yeah, you might.
It's gorgeous. So.
And just when you look at Hunt Road, you'll see in between the dam and our brand new culvert, there's all cruddy cement, that's cause the state would not allow us to touch it. So we had to go up to the end of our property. So we left. Two feet of our old cruddy culvert stuck to there, and we then connected it. Took two years, and they still wouldn't give us a permit. And we were about to lose a hundred and twenty thousand street rent. Cause I had already. Extended it one, four years. So that's just what's wrong with your policy right now. So when you go look at it, you'll see. I already had a risk, that's why we left, cruddy cement, between the two.
Cause it's not ours.
Right. Anyway, I also wanna thank Beth for the great job she's doing, attracting all of our ARPA funds. She did a annual filing report, I included it so you can see, and when we did this report. It's, it's amazing what we use our money for, we really got ahead of a lot of capital. Upgrades. And it's, it's, it's done a good deal. Thank you, Beth. And then, um. A reminder, we have a town meeting. May fourteen. Um. We had a meeting today with the. Moderator, which will be Mark. Rose Irving, no, not Rose Irving, Mike, Mike, and Robin and I. And, um, I've also talked to the five months, so the max number of people we can hit in that, you know, it's all two hundred eighty-four people. The lungs are all in chairs, and we have them tables. So we're gonna put, one binding up on the stage with Robin. Put as many chairs in there as we can, and I'm hoping we don't have to move to the school, I reserve the school as well. That's for, that's for what, for the town meeting vote.
How many people do we have in that?
We had seventy. Over, over on here. Now, things have come down on Facebook, and.
Right, I know last night at the board of that meeting, um, one of the. The vice chair, um, in her closing statements. Requested or, or hoped everybody would, uh, approve the what, what for. So that's a good start.
Well, that's good. Now, the one question I have for the board, the advice, is, is up to the moderator, how he's going to run. Meeting, but. Normally, when there's sixty people in a town meeting. We hand out ballots, all ready to vote. If there's two hundred eighty people there. I'd rather them come through the front door, be vetted, they're, approve the vote and be handed a ballot. That's just my thinking, cause. You hand out two hundred eighty ballots and to not know whether everybody.
So you need to register our voters there.
And I already talked to them, they, they are willing to be going, would not be registered voters, we'd be volunteers.
But they, they're generating the list.
They, they know the list, and they know how to do it in a group, so you'd have to add two people at the front door, vetting people as they come in and getting them a ballot.
What happens if we get more and we have to move all over to the school?
Then we, we have the language ready to, it's not called a churn, where. Um, is a word. I think it's reconvening the meeting at the school, and then we put, we have a sign ready, we post on the door, and, and we move, we literally. I think it's reconvening the meeting at the school and then we put, we have a sign ready, we post on the door, that, and we move, we literally walk over to the school. And have.
We've done that before, I remember doing that.
Sidewalk magic required.
Yeah.
That was three hundred.
Not a lot of people there.
Not as many, many as a transportation station here.
The biggest one was.
Looking for the sidewalk.
The Ram School.
Oh, definitely, wow.
I was on that meeting too. That was, that was, that was, it got bad.
I, I was very disappointed in the, the budget hearing, I, um. I've been going to these for years and I, I think it's important for people to, to be able to come out and, uh, express their views and, and, and be heard. Um, but it, it got, um, a personal, emotional attacks and, and I'm really disappointed in lack of stability that's going on in these meetings nowadays.
It was, it was weird, telling you, uh, you don't know what you're doing, you didn't read the budget, you didn't.
I know I talked, I, I agree, I talked to somebody after that meeting, I was.
It wasn't nice.
Disrespectful is.
You can say, I want my kid to get a good education, I like those times, we all.
Wish you expressed your opinions, but, but the lack of stability just surprised me, the person who attacked.
It was awful, I didn't like it at all, but there were only a couple of people that did that, I think that was every, of that many.
Just, it's variated.
So are we okay with the plan, have some two people there handing out the ballots, can you show us the ballot?
It just, uh, I vote yes, I don't know.
Do we just have it at the school?
Well, we've already advertised, we, before we realized it. So you have to start with, if it's all of a sudden obvious, we can move the meeting out as soon as possible. Right, but you want me to recommend vetting everyone coming in, cause it's something we've never done.
We just assumed, now people live, have property in Columbia, but don't vote in Columbia.
Yes, so they'll have the property list as well, and you have to be on, you have to own the property by a certain date.
There's not gonna be very many of those, but it could be some.
Uh, I, I, if you think that's the best way to do it, I have no problem going, better than state to me, I, I don't. Uh, and that's the night after the, um, the home workers. No, that's the little egg that moved, that's Thursday.
That's the sixteenth.
Correct, we gotta move to Thursday to sixteen, okay.
At four thirty.
Alright, the correspondence in there, read for yourself. I had to ask somebody, Columbia resident went to, uh, Centenar, Centenar.
Centenary.
Centenary University, I had to ask about that, Robert Parish. Robert Parish went there, you know Robert Parish? Just saying, I didn't know where it was. Uh, no transfers, but we have some refunds, I moved to approve refunds totaling. Four hundred fifteen dollars. And thirty-one cents. Hope it matches. Do you discuss the problems there? I moved to approve the payment bills totaling three hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Consisting of twenty-three, twenty-four emergency, twenty-three, twenty-four regular credit card and paychecks. Is that the last payment to both brothers?
I think, I thought there was a resume on that.
We're hanging out for a little? Do we pay for Little League scoreboard wiring? We have a Little League scoreboard, is it up?
It's up, we just don't have the, uh, the show maybe the. Thank you, Mr. Dunnitt, and so it was original donation and the last.
We can find out why the grill is boiling.
Yeah, it looks like we're holding twenty-eight thousand. Uh, yeah, there, we put in a, uh, request for service. Cause we don't know why and we don't have a scoreboard, we're not. Electric.
I heard there's a timer on it.
It fixed the other scoreboard, that's how we, we didn't realize that the scoreboard gets you a timer to, you know, two hours. That's so when you leave, you don't leave it on forever. But we learned.
There's four payments to open to areas of that one.
So that's for, um, our fines, it started at fifty-four hundred and we got down to thirteen hundred and we got down to twenty-one hundred five. Oh, all sorts of things, they have to survive, is it, yeah, a few months, right, so, um. You know, we can have our chain certify property for weight. Load and we can have a cover on a fan in the. Janus closet that is no longer a bathroom, way up in the ceiling, but that requires a fan cover. I said three hundred and five, five, you know, just a lot of little things that we solve right away, it was good learning, positive for it. Many of us have not talked through that, sort of hired them to report.
Did they just show up?
Yes, and they, they told me it was not requested, a lot of times they, um, vindicate the voiding.
Right.
Or motion, I see something untruly.
Did they just find a plan for someone?
But they, uh. I, I have to say it was. They weren't out to dance.
They were fortunate.
But they were very thorough, they went through all the records, they interviewed the employees individually.
Yeah, oh, okay, thank you, all you were originally trying to study to him was pretty.
Yeah, and they actually, from talking to them, they, I, they, nobody's ever heard of finding well, so we, we did really well.
But it's, and it's good to know what's safe and not mine, that's.
We're taxed every week now, it seems.
I went, I, there were a lot of people.
There and everything, so.
They were very coordinated.
The fields all good?
The ball fields?
Yeah.
The coal field is great, beautiful, it goes off the field fine, the Lily Field still needs to be hot dressed, but because it was wet for so long. We couldn't doctor it, so we just seeded it and we're gonna play the season and then at the end of the season, we're gonna top it, so we reseed it. So we'll get there and we have to do a little more drainage work. From the drainage work of the Lily Field, that drainage work now has to go under their walking path, it was being corroded. From all the water.
Maybe it won't rain.
That'd be one, I like the rain a little bit at night.
I never ask God.
Any other question about the bill? All those in favor of paying the bills? Um, audience citizen. Nick, you got any questions, you'll have to type a man. We'll come back to it. Anybody else?
I'll read for that, nobody?
Uh, and board member comments? Yeah, I. The H V, um, twenty-two, we give an update, so. Were required by their statute to hire a commissioning agent, now that. At least most of the forgetting grant, um, the committee for months have been. Reviewing sample, um, request for qualification for hold and all that, so we. They brought a point where we have, um, we would like. Um, to consider sending out, because we have kind of a choice based upon values of grants, uh, fortunately, the. Professional class estimate, um, that we included in our grant did have sixty thousand. Uh, earmarked for the commissioning, so that that's good news, so we had interest. They have to go around and make sure that the designs meet, meet the specs and requirements to. On the other, arm, which isn't quite as urgent, um, but. You know, the H V committee would like to recommend, um, if we want to move forward with this to. Um, looking higher than project manager, yeah. Cause we, we consider quicker to work than project manager, there's, um, you know. That seem to be the, the main two, seem like the project manager. Tends to be more technical and they're ones who can probably be better suited to answer the questions between. You know, the contractor and the, uh, designer and, and, but it's just important, keep all of us who. All armies I've got to, um, schedule, cause once we get going, I mean, you know, I mean, we have to have all of this completed right now. Instead of thirty-third, twenty-five, unless that gets changed.
Pretty key often to make your change order, helps us all get documented and negotiated long before causes a slip in the spin.
In, in, in the way we recommended six, anybody else?
Okay, we're taking action tonight.
Uh, no, with the commissioning agent, I don't know how you wanna handle that, I mean, Mike Silbaskers has the, uh, the final version of what we've been. Marking up for weeks now, so do I just have him work with Mark and bring it up next meeting or help him ask that?
Probably, I would stay on top of that and get the finished product and get it to Mark and we'll, we'll bring it up and send it out and take a look at it and.
Okay, and, and question, are, are we having summer concert series?
Yes. July second. July thirtieth. And August twenty. Something like that, three, I'm trying to get the, the local. Um, local quartet, um, quartet two, or squared.
You know, what do they call them?
They're called, don't tell me, don't tell me, they're called Trumble Highway, it's really, Trumble Highway, they're nice. Yeah, they feature a gold round ukulele. Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry.
July second.
July, July thirteenth, but June nineteenth is Bruce John.
On the green.
Junior players playing in July, June fourteenth at the beach.
To June fourteenth?
June fourteenth and nineteenth, July second, July thirtieth and August twenty.
So, yes. Okay, uh, anybody else? So this time I move to suspend the meeting at, uh. Eight twenty-three P M and enter into executive session and invite Mark Walter, town administrator, join the executive session. We'll be talking about, uh, real estate item and we will, we will, we'll just inform you over personnel item, which is.
Oh, I have this meeting.
So I just wanted to make sure they, they sound.
So at this time, we're gonna exit executive session at eight thirty-one. And, uh, we're going to take action, I move to suspend, nope, I move to offer, I had Mark Walter, town administrator. To hire a land surveyor for property at three thirty, Route sixty-six to send proposed property purchase to plan and zoning. For an eight twenty-four approval. Eight twenty-four pools, sorry. Uh, all those in favor? Those, none, okay, and with that, I move to adjourn at eight thirty-two, all those in favor?